Good evening. I'd like to open the May ninth, two thousand twenty-three, Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting, and I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance.
And to the Republic, which stands one nation.
Did you just hit the thing now on take the mouse and hit that up there so we can clear the screen? The mouse.
Okay, this kind of like the Commissioner can introduce himself, please, and start. Andy Marzis, Rob Wallace.
Kenny Kessler.
Ken Stevens.
Kitty Grant.
Paul Shanley.
Doug Cuny, alternate.
Staff. Oh, Bob, I'm sorry.
Oh. Bob Legnard.
And then staff.
Oh, Donna Kentish.
Thank you.
Hello.
Beth Kabagda.
Chuck Andrews, attorney for the commission.
And David McCollum, Landes Coordinator.
Thank you. I don't think this, Rich Tibbetts on.
Uh, not that I can see at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So then let me just reread our use of personal electronic devices. Please note for the record that any personal electronic devices used by commission members is for the purpose of reviewing materials located in the Google Drive on the town's website. I also want to remind the commission and let the public know that beginning this evening, um, we have a new process for recording commission member positions. Whether Commissioner takes a position on any motion or other items that require voting, they will state their name and their position, and it will be a roll call for each item. With that, let's resume the public hearing for Steiner Inc. at Benedict Road and.
Good evening, Peter Olson, on behalf of the applicants, I'm going to hand out copies of revised site plan sheet SE three. Following the last public hearing, we had an exchange of communication with Allenford Fire Marshal regarding the access. Site around the site by fire trucks. He was generally okay with these. Generally okay with southern hammerhead in terms of how the turning diagram works. Um, northern hammerhead, he had some concerns about the trucks. Uh, overhanging edge. So we did a little working of those turning diagrams, and as a result, what we've done is added some grass pavers to the edge and backside of the north hammerhead. And you can see those on this SE three plan in a set of hexagon pattern. Um, because we're going to use grass pavers, they don't have any impact on stormwater, um, their purpose, um, so really a negative will change in that in that regard. And we think that because the only reason to have them there is for fire truck access, but we hopefully extremely rarely use. And so grass paper is an appropriate choice for that. Other than that, we haven't looked through any other comments from the town, and so we think we're done and ready to close. Um, otherwise, we're happy to answer any questions.
In regards to what Peter was just explaining, just for the record, I just want to read the email that I received from Allenford Fire Marshal, and it was after the floor this afternoon. Says, thank you, Peter, Chris dropped off a copy earlier and we reviewed it. I am okay with revision. We will work with Steiner closer to completion of the project on signage for no parking fire zone in the hammerhead areas.
Any questions from the public or comments? Okay, permission? Questions for the applicant?
We can start the wetland discussion to meet on the fifteenth, and we're hopeful of a decision on that there would make after that.
With that, I will close the public hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks. Start our business meetings and I'll speak Doug Cuny.
Mister, uh, Mister Chairman?
Yes, oh, Mister Tibbetts.
Uh, it, it appears Mister Tibbetts has just joined the meeting.
Hi, guys.
Hey, Rich.
What's up? Sorry, just got in from sunny Florida. Work, work purposes, no fun.
I extend my seat.
I give it back.
Thank you. So has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes?
It makes a motion to approve the minutes of four twenty-five, twenty-three.
Like to make a change in minutes?
Yes.
Um, on the last thing, it wasn't Doug that made the commentary comments, it was myself. This comes right. About the roll call voter.
You would ask that.
Yes.
So are you, um, checking the motion?
I'll second the motion, the wind changes.
Ken?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Yes?
Kitty? Kitty, yes.
Shannon? Yes.
Bob Legnard, yes.
Bob Legnard, yes, so moved. Do we have any invoices that? Do we have any invoices?
Uh, invoices. Donna, did Nancy give you an invoice?
Yeah. Who should I hand it to?
I'm just telling it's the amount and who's it for, please.
All right, the total amount would be one thousand three hundred and eleven dollars.
And that's to the news times?
That's correct.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
I move that we pay the invoice of one thousand three hundred and eleven dollars for the news time.
Second.
You, Mister Legnard?
Second.
Paul? Aye.
Kitty Grant, aye.
Ken Stevens, aye.
Kenny Kessler, aye.
Yes, Tibbetts.
Kenny, aye.
All right, so moved.
Glad to know we're keeping them in business.
So the next item on the agenda is our work session for seventeen Whitney Road. We have been focused on this application for quite some time. There has been a lot of input from the public, there's been a lot of input from other professionals, there's been a lot of discussion amongst the commission. Um, and I think probably would do in everyone's best interest if we reviewed some of the items previously discussed. And maybe we should start with, um.
The statue?
The statue, thank you. Doug could share that with us.
Certainly, Chuck Anders, I think would identify yourself when you talk, I believe. Chuck Anders, attorney for the commission. The first, this is a nor- normal applications, you look to see, does it comply with the regulations? Or if it's an amendment to the regulations, is it good idea, in accordance with the conference of plan, as you know, this is an eight thirty G application, so it's a different store. It's a different sort of standard. What I'll review for you, and I understand what you're here to do is give us, give staff some direction to, because we need to write a written resolution on this. And courts are very clear that we need to have a collective statement of reasons. You can't just do a moral alignment for this statute. So the elements of the statute, the first one is, um, in order, again, in frame in terms of, uh, of whether you can deny it or have, uh, conditions that appear of the viability of the project, but are there substantial public interests in health, safety, or other matters which the mission, the commission can legally consider, which would justify denial or permission approval? So that's sort of one. What are there, are there substantial public interests implicated by this application? And the second one is, do those public interests clearly outweigh the need for affordable housing? And then the third one would be, can, do these public interests, can they be protected by reasonable changes to the, uh, development? So that's what it may be helpful for us as staff in drafting resolution is to consider those elements of the statute. Starting probably with, are there, did you find that there are any substantial public interests uh, implicated by this application that, that are worthy of consideration that could either be justify denial or conditional approval, if not, it would be more informative.
Yeah, one of the things that we might want to review is the health and safety issues.
Well, when you talk about health and safety, um, I, the one, the first one that comes to mind would be the traffic. Now, so in, in thinking of what Chuck just explained to the commission, is traffic an issue? Well, based on the, the public interest, the, uh, what the public expressed, yes, it is, you know, to them, yes, it is an issue. Based on the experts that you've had involved with the application and, um, the information provided by the applicant, you have your traffic authority, which is the police commission, and the police commission, from what I recall, and maybe you all have some more information, but from what I recall from the police commission, they didn't say that there was a major traffic issue with this particular application.
And the health issues we can discuss? And input from staff?
Well, the, again, dealing with, um, the health issues, um, the main health issue was what is called fugitive dust. Fugitive dust was, um, you did have a week, uh, reports and comments from our health director Laura Vassil, who was our expert in regards to that, and she also took it one step further by talking with, maybe you can help me a little bit with this, Chuck, because I'm not as precise with these. With the responses, I didn't organize the responses. It will.
Sure, um, Chuck Anders again, attorney for the commission. So for the health issues, you had, first of all, let's see, the data is that this, this development is located adjacent to a, a contractor's masonry site where they sell and process, uh, different types of, of stone. And they have the big bins, you saw those pictures that are stored right adjacent to the property. And you have, uh, just, if you remember the development, the, the building itself, which is one big forty-two unit building, is right on that northern, I believe, property line, and part of the, uh, the, the half of the units, again, half, there's twenty-one units in the back that are facing that, and the other are in the front. So you had twenty-one units facing that, uh, that facility.
If I may, I think with opening patios and.
Balconies.
Right, so you're twenty-one units, they had balconies, there's street floors, seven on each floor, patios on the first floor, balconies above. And the closest were fifteen feet away, fifteen point one five feet, I believe is what the health director says, and what that confirmed.
Yes.
From the property line, and right over the property line, you, you can actually see in the pictures the bins, uh, where that had been, where the materials were stored. And what you, so that's the situation, that's the layout, and then you have the history of, it was the applicant himself, and Herso, the, the couple, the Saunders, that the, that application, uh, for that use, it was an existing, uh, site there, but in two thousand and four was, uh, granted an amendment to the approval to allow those, that, uh, contractor's yard, masonry yard, to take place at that site where all, all the different storage and the gravel and the, and the granite and the mulch and different items are stored again, and, and you can see it, it's right up on that property line. That was approved in two thousand and four, almost immediately, I don't know how long it took to build out, but starting in two thousand and five, the Saunders uh, registered complaints, uh, to, uh, town officials, both to the zoning enforcement officer, to the first selectman, I think the police went there once. And that continued off and on, I think it started in June two thousand and five, and the last record of, of a complaint, it's again a telephone complaint, was in, uh, July twenty twenty-one. But, you know, there was like, there was potentially a three or four year period, I think from like twenty eleven to twenty sixteen, where it seemed to be okay. But the complaints are dust, all of those complaints at the existing facility. And again, the existing building is further away from the property line than this proposed building, it's thirty-four feet away. And it's not a residential use, it's just a, a, uh, storage yard, I believe, or.
It's a contractor's share, an industrial use.
So, and at that time, the, in two thousand and four, I believe, the property was zoned industrial. Uh, there was a change later on, the zoning back was changed. So anyway, that, that's sort of the data, and it's, and it's consistent, uh, also DEP was called and, and inspected a couple of times. And normally, there was, um, I, I, I think initially, the first couple of years, they didn't have it all down right, they didn't have all the sprinklers done. Uh, but later on, um, I think that got fixed pretty quick, and then there were, that basically was done. And then they said, well, we're doing some other measures, let's spray down the trucks as they come in, or let's do some other things, but nonetheless, there were still complaints made, because you water things down, water evaporates, can depend on the heat. You know, water, uh, you can't use the water in the winter, so, um, and, and sometimes people come down, and by the time they got down there, it was fine. Um, so anyway, but there's that history of the point, so that is the data that's in the reports, it was given to the health director, the health director, uh, so he gave her report, this is Laura Vassil, uh, after describing it, and she said, there's a high risk of fugitive dust and airborne particulate matter exposure and potential nuisance complaints associated with residential building. Proposed approximately fifteen point five one five feet from the masonry site involving regular vehicle traffic, loading and unloading materials. She says there is significant scientific research available indicating that the continual particulate matter exposes exposures affect health, particularly older adults and individuals with chronic illnesses. The fact that there's been known fugitive dust complaints and nuisance conditions involving two properties is also critical concern, as it demonstrates that particulate matter exposures have already occurred, as well as being a high risk for airborne particulate matter exposures and potential adverse health outcomes from particulate matter airborne exposure. So that was in her report, but what she had done too is, because she's the health director, she has some expertise, but she sent it to the DEP airborne person. That was somebody, Cheryl Fields, who's a toxicologist.
Right.
Uh, and a toxicologist is, is somebody who, uh, has an understanding of scientific disciplines and, and works with chemicals and other substances to determine if they're toxic or harmful to human, to humans. And so what she wrote back, yeah, to look to the health director was that Laura, your correct to raise potential compatibility issues if multifamily housing is constructed adjacent to a masonry supply yard with a history of fugitive dust complaints. Um, and then, uh, she goes on to say a number of things. There are materials that could be present in a masonry yard, such as concrete, granite, ceramic, tile, sand, slate, brick, that could contain silica. If the masonry yard is doing activities such as cutting, milling, or crushing these materials, the dust that is generated could contain silica. Breathing dust containing crystalline silica has been linked to serious lung diseases, called celiacosis. Even if the future dust does not contain silica, exposure to elevated levels of particulate matter has been associated with short-term health effects such as eye nose and throat and lung irritation, coughing, sneezing, running nose and shortness of breath. Exposure to fine particles can affect lung function and worsen medical conditions such as asthma and heart disease. So anyway, those, those are some expert comments that are in the record that, uh, were, were, that you have in front of you uh, that for, for your consideration. And I don't think, I don't think the applicant had submitted any, you know, expert information about that, other than saying that those guys should fix their problem, I think that was, you know, that was their fault.
Yes, I, I, I particularly have a tremendous problem with the health issues. Uh, you know, right now, uh, the pollen count is astronomical. I'm in, I'm in this mask. And I was on, just my, my, I had, I had to wear two masks yesterday. And even with, with that, I've been having trouble for twenty-four hours since. And if I think of dust and things like that coming over as well, I can't imagine the problems people with, with this sort of condition would have. It would be incredible. Uh, and the other problem I have is, is this, is, is traffic, and, and parking in particular. When we had the thirty apartments with sixty spaces. Okay, I thought, okay, even with one bedroom apartment, you're going to get husbands and wives. And most people will have two cars. They will tell me, no, but I'm sorry, they do. And, and they go to work. With sixty spaces, you have it. If, if they have anybody coming over, thirty different apartments, where are these people going to be parking? And now you have forty-two apartments with, with sixty spaces. I, I have driven, uh, Whitney and, uh, an Algen many, many times in the last couple of months. And I'm telling you, if one hard park on one side of the street, it, it's difficult. It is going to be a problem for the people who live in this area, and I firmly believe it. Uh, I, I think forty, as I said, it's an eight thirty G, so I don't know what we have to say about parking. But realistically, I think it's huge. But between that and the hell, I have a tremendous problem with this application. Kitty Grant, sorry.
Commissions request we had our staff to come up with a potential option concept. Which I believe has been loaded to the Google Drive left to do.
Yes, well, we put that up there four weeks ago.
Yeah. It was before our last meeting.
It was before your last meeting, and, um, you, you particular, in particular, had staff to see what we could come up with. That would be a collaboration, and, and again, it was a concept. First, we had to see, can we develop something on the site, um, dealing to scale? And we came up with, uh, what is included in your illustrations, dealing with height, trying to bring it in more, um, compatible with the existing architecture in the surrounding elevator. Uh, so building two sto- two buildings, two stories each. Um, trying to combine a little bit of the TOD app with this, but at the same time recognize it's an eight thirty G. And you're always looking to try to, in, in your past history that you will find in your uh, affordable housing plan and how we update it all the time, you're always looking to provide good integration within a neighborhood, to make it more appealing, um, in terms of the architecture, in terms of not segregating it out, not doing, um, what a lot of times they call in, in, in environmental justice. Try to, you know, you're creating a massive building, but you're not doing the people that live there justice. Um, the distance from the industrial uses, we were able to double the area away from that, that rear property line, using our own zoning regulations, the twenty-five foot buffer. Um, one thing that we, you may want to consider is to add, if you would consider even looking that, to that further, another row of trees, you know, it's just truly should be some type of a buffer. In, in addition to whatever you want to do. Um, and what we did was, we came up with the, dealing with some of the financial aspects that have been brought up in the past, by doing a two-story building, you're eliminating the need for elevators. Things like that, they're very costly to a development of this nature. And we really, you know, we just tried to look at the overall property, the overall, um, concerns that were expressed by the neighbors, by, um, the, um, professionals, the health department and such, by having to building face each other. You have the, uh, eastern end, northern end, facing the rear of the lines, so again, you're eliminating those decks, those things that are fifteen feet from the line with the most exposure to the industrial use adjacent to it. Um, I know people will say this is a transition zone, and so this type of housing is, is a good transitional housing. But I think in, in respect to your experience that you've had in dealing with TOD planning and being so progressive in a lot of your zoning regulations pertaining to affordable housing, is it being included in your regulations that it, this is a better fit than what was proposed? So that's why you asked me to, to do it, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to explain it a little bit more, so you could understand that. And again, this, the emphasis on its concept. It's not a site plan, all we did was make sure that the size of the structure was in scale with the rest of the property, because the most important thing was the footprint of sculpture in relation to the property lines and the parking.
And, and in line with what you were talking about, the, the concept here, i- in the denial, there were several suggestions on how to make this, uh, a, a, a better.
In the, in the previous.
In the previous, sounds like, yeah, a, a better site.
That you did without, you denied it without prejudice.
Without prejudice, yeah, for, for people to look at. So, you know, I, I think, I think we've done, we've done a lot of work with, with status, and a lot with this.
Well, here's a commission app too, because it was your suggestion that we try to do this, and I think it was based on your history with other applications similar to this.
Comments?
How does, uh, hey, Rich Tibbetts, uh, I'm just curious, given the, the input from uh, the health department about airborne particles and the closeness and the proximity of the properties, even if, even if we just, how the buildings are faced, air is air and wind is wind and travels, right? And to me, this is a like, that's a pretty good, these are professionals, right? They know a lot more about it than we do. This is a pretty good EHNS issue, uh, or a pretty strong EHNS issue that I think we really need to think about, I think the applicant should be thinking about too, like, like, this is all on record. And if a building is built in an area where there's known particulates in the air, that can cause issues and people start to have health issues, like, it's like a lawsuit machine, I don't know, Chuck. You're, you're a legal expert, that's, that's kind of, how, I don't know, that's where my curiosity is going. Is, does it even make sense at that point? You know, no matter how you face the buildings, it's still in the air. Blows around, like Kitty was saying, right? It's like.
Yeah, Chuck Anderson, uh, for record. The, I, I mean, the issue, it is, it's on residential. Um, and I think that the complaints were, that we've heard were from this, this particular, this, this property owner, but the other residential, I don't think there were records of other residences in the neighborhood that we saw, or that we were aware of that, that made similar complaints, which suggests that it's the concentration at this particular area, at this particular location, and if you're trying to be balanced and, and recognize the right of a property owner's own residential to develop it. And, and under your duty, because under the portal, under the act, you have to look, are there reasonable changes that can be made uh, to address this? That's part of what your obligation is. So that's part of what I understand is going on here, that's another element of, of this thing, is there a way to, uh, under the statute to address that. But yeah, there, there's a certain amount of uncertainty, um, but I'm, 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 I'm sort of trying to, you know, present it in, in a, in a way that covers all the evidence, and, and if we address, if you have a double row of trees, if you re, if you get a further separation distance, if you do a different orientation, um, then that, and, and you have fewer units, I, I mean frankly, that's, there's less people exposed. Um, then, uh, and, and you have more of the parking in the back as opposed to the residences, that, that may be a way to, to address this.
Mister Chairman, can I just interrupt, just for a, a technical thing real quick? Mister Tibbetts, were you at the last meeting by chance?
No, but I'm red up.
Okay, so, so you reviewed all the recordings for all of the testimony on this?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you said that.
Sorry, I have been, and I was at many of the other meetings with redundant, um, feedback, and I'm pretty red in.
Okay, very good.
But our offer one.
Go ahead. Just be talking, I can't hear them.
Yeah, I was just, I was just noting for Doug, for the record, that he wasn't. I was just, I was just noting for Doug, for the record, that he wasn't seated. Um, he is an alternate, alternates cannot comment during the decision unless they're seated.
Got it. Can I have a question?
Go for it.
Uh, maybe Chuck can answer this. Can can we hold this developer to fixing things off property? Or or deny this on the basis of something that's happening off his property or off the property he wants to develop? Whether whether it's the dust issue or the parking issue or the the traffic issues or anything else. Are they are they good solid grounds to uh? Oppose this?
Uh, Chuck Anderson, again, attorney for the commission, that's that that's a good question and that's sort of their argument. I think what you can't do is you you can't say you can't use your site at all. You can't make reasonable use of your site uh because of off-site things. I think people have the right to use their property. And so that I I my, I think it is okay, you can take account of the surrounding areas. Uh, to determine uh the compatibility uses. Zoning originally started as as an effort to sort of preventative nuisance, so you don't have. Uh, you know, toxic things next to your residential stuff. That that was why you have the segregation of uses in the first place. So I I think the i- i- you have a, you have to have strong reasons if it's an affordable housing application. So I think that that is sort of the the tone here, the recognition that. You you recognize the reality of what is there, that the other property owner was there first. It was on the zone industrial. There wasn't any appears to be complying with these with the conditions of experiment. That said. Rather than uh, you know, try to try to. Uh, it 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 appears just based on the applicants, again, this is a third party, it's applicants themselves on testimony. Over a sixteen-year period that is continues happen. So so the the thought is that you take that into account when you render any decision. So that that that's what I'm thinking, but I think it would be an overstatement to say, okay, well, you can't do anything. Because then that's, I think that would essentially be saying people can't make reasonable use of their property because of of other. Or or you can't do any residential uses, I suppose.
And the parking as well. Could, uh, with you, with a much larger number of units. The parking has decreased tremendously by the number of units. So would eight thirty G cover that as well?
Parking has always been an issue with any eight thirty G application, then we draw this commission.
Okay.
Um, you know, that's one of the classic uses that some developers have used eight thirty G. Is just to bypass zoning's parking regulations because they consider them to be whatever they consider them.
I I'm not aware of any case that's been won by a town because of excess parking. I I just.
Absolutely not.
Um, that then I found that to be a substantial public interest in our ways of reporting. But but Bob, that's a fair point and you guys can, you know, certainly discuss.
Anything else, Bob?
Yeah, I have one more, one 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 more comment or question about, you know. If 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 and when we did make a decision on this. Do you win the battle and lose the war or 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 what? Do we have? The ability to say where dust is gonna land? And by denying this on based on the dust coming on to that property, do do we devalue everybody else's house in the neighborhood? That's it.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, I have, um, just to piggyback off what Mr. Legman said. Um, we don't know of any other complaints from another property.
I would say as being a zoning enforcement officer over the last. Twenty-something years. I do not recall off the top of my head, I receive receiving any complaints outside of um. Outside of this property.
So it couldn't just be because the density of those bins right there against that property line? Could have been because of that. Um, but anyways, back to my original, why I raised my hand, um. There was obviously there's discrepancy about the zone change or when it was the property in question. Um, do we still know if there was no change, when there was no change?
My research always showed it was the double R ten zone.
All right, so the town recognizes it as double R ten, one hundred percent.
At some point, it was industrial, right?
At some point, I I mean, the garage was built there. It's an industrial garage. It's, you know, when I, when you look at the bill, when you look at the building file and such, I I I can't speak. For what happened in the eighties or the nineties with the building department at the time when Mr. Ruble was the building official.
May may I, may I also add some clarification to this too? Uh, I I think there's a map that was referred to in a plan of conservation and development back in two thousand and seven. That showed the use of this property as being industrial, which is not the same as the zone. We clarify two different things.
And that's what has caused all the confusion.
Use was industrial, but not the zone.
We that Miss Allison, Mrs. Miss, I'm sorry, Allison. Saint Germain posed that question and we answered that during the public hearing. Because if David is correct, it was a plan, a map that showed in the P O C D showed it as an industrial use. It was a map that was describing industrial uses throughout the town, not zoning.
And then one other, one other question, and this is for, you know, Sir Anderson. And this is piggybacking off of what Rich asked. If we were to approve this as presented and then ten years down the line. There's all these people that are living there that are starting to develop cancer, and they want to now sue the town. As we approve this without looking into this deadly dust more deeply, could the town become liable? Or is that one hundred percent on the developer and the property owner?
Chuck Anderson, attorney of commission, I mean, that's that's a big speculative question.
But it's a huge question.
It it's a use, it is a question generally. I I have not seen the town liable for approving things.
Okay.
Um, that that said, if I were someone that developed. Um, a disease, I would sue everyone under the book.
So that's what we do as Americans.
Especially when there's all this public.
Yeah, and the town has certain immunities as well that private people don't have. So, so but um.
So, uh, but there's risk there, you know, I mean, that's what I brought it up, Paul, I appreciate it, uh, like. I this is what I do for a living, right? Risk management. And I'm not talking about us necessarily, but like, I'm just thinking about the the development, sorry. The development property. Uh, it just feels extremely risky, both in the pub, uh, public health and safety angle, but also just as a developer, I don't know. I maybe that's out of scope, but. Or the, they say. Rich, sorry.
Kenny Kessler, understanding that the town desperately needs affordable housing. And that is why we have worked very closely with at least two properties since I've been on. Um, to help bring affordable housing into the area. What is the next step? For us to make sure that we incorporate affordable housing? And yet, bring down the the. Amount of units, parking issues, for the environmental issues. I I I will say I was struck at the last meeting. When I think the attorney said it, that. You know, don't blame us for somebody else's environmental issue. And then when I learned that, well, for these this property owner. This was an environmental issue. Um, I thought it was disingenuous and I suspect that. It probably means that going into it. Um, so where where do we, where do we go from here? What 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 happens now?
Well, I think that that's one, you you're right, one of the. Elements of the eight thirty G, it's whether the substantial public interest, if you refine that as substantial public interest in the uh. In health and safety uh can be addressed by reasonable changes. And I think that was, I mean, in a normal application, you don't have a concept plan for an alternative. I mean, even in the TOB application, didn't you make some suggestions, you flush it out more? So that that was the, the the notion here is that we, that for, like you said, you do recognize that the town does have an equal for biohazing. I think we put in the record evidence of of us trying to work with developers, we have to come up with a. You know, proposals and where where it's been successful. And and so and and that's what you try to do, you target this thing instead of fifteen feet away, which is to the to these tents. So we we can move things around, we can have a greater buffer, we can adjust these others. So so that's the effort, as I understood, of of why you went the extra step when the chair asks you to go the extra and do something more. So so.
You're there, yeah, they were acknowledging the right, I believe, in in the conversations I had with Ken. You're acknowledging the right of the person to develop, right? I mean, yes, it was very nice in the TOD plan, they showed this area to be a nice park area. Property owner chooses to develop this property into residential uses, okay? Um, TOD, you felt that there were some changes that needed to be made in the TOD portion in the application. You denied it without prejudice and hopes. That the property owner would come back with alternatives related to that. Unfortunately, when you're put in the situation of eight thirty G. Fortunate or unfortunate, I should say, the commission has a lot of experience with the act itself. And so I I see the concern on your faces, well, it it seems like, do we deny it? Do you deny it outright? Do you deny it and say, well? Take a look at the the concept plan, see if that will work, see if we can come together to some type of an agreement. Or do you just deny it based on the health? Um, reasons that are given by your experts, or do you approve it and say? The testimony that's provided by the experts is enough.
Or or you approve it with the condition that they modify it to come in closer to the concept plan or something, yeah.
Uh, you may or may not do units too, um. Uh, as far as, so the activity on uh the gulf, it's called, I think, right, uh, on the site, the stone site. On the activity there, are they, are they doing everything they can by the letter of the law to contain? In their zone, literally their zoning, you know, standard, to contain what's happening on their site? Like, I I guess like the thing I keep coming back to in my head is. While there there's a ton of, there's a lot of unknowns, right? So we're speculating that the neighborhood and the folks in the surrounding area have exhibited no ill impact. Because of the the dust being generated from the site, uh, but that's pure speculation. I think honestly.
Rich, I have to disagree with you.
Okay.
It is not speculation. Um, you know, over the years, over the many years that that business has been there. Um, I as I stated before, I do not recall um anyone in that particular area. Complaining to the zoning department in regards to the dust. So, I I'm stating that, I'm stating it as a zoning official.
That's fair, that's fair, that's because maybe they didn't see dust floating out of their property. But I'm talking more about like the health, the health side of it, right? So if there are. Things in the air that they, you can't sense, you don't know, right? It's like uh carbon monoxide, the silent killer, right? Things like that that are floating into their, maybe, oh, maybe fifteen years from now, it becomes a thing. That I guess that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out. So like, is there a precedent legally that? That they are not abiding by the standards for their business? And I'm I'm trying, I'm trying to work here, but these are just thoughts in my head, right? So are there things that they're doing that are, that, you know, somebody would come in as a professional and say, you're not doing this right? You should have, I don't know, some sort of screening up that's twenty feet high. I have no idea, I don't work in the stone industry. But I'm I'm wondering if just to protect us, right? And to protect the people in the neighborhood, particularly in this development, are are there stronger controls that we should try to? You know, either either ask the developer to put in place or the other property owner, I'm just trying to figure that out, like it 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 feels.
Um, well, I I thought it was very helpful when I read the history of the complaints. Because basically, there's two sources of authority that are at issue here, the regulatory, or you have your zoning authority. You have your approved conditions of approval, which require sprinklers and and uh to go beyond the bins and to. And to water them down, uh. And, you know, while that wasn't done and eventually it was done. Um, so so I don't think, I think they are in compliance with their zoning permit, but tho- those are standard ways to handle dust, there's nothing wrong with that. Then, a separate source of authority is the DEP, there is an air emissions unit that that looks at that. If you read those history complaints twice, DEP was called down and inspected. And basically, it looked like they recommended to do, there 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 are other things that when Steve Fowler and Beth were doing this. They recommended things which weren't in the conditions, I don't know what required, the developer did them anyway. Um, there there were certain other things that are add-ons. And DEP basically recommended the same thing, also said, you know, you should keep a log of it. Uh, you you should, you know, make sure your employees are trained right. You could water things down more, and I remember one day you said, well, when the new stuff comes in, you water it before it gets dumped. And that wasn't in the approvals, but they started doing that. There there are sort of common sense, best practices, things that can be done. But that said, there's still limitations in in that, given that this use, which is going to involve. You know, hauling around and and dumping lots of earth materials, it's going to generate some dust, even if they're wet. Uh, and and it can be put down and and uh it it can work most of the time. But there's going to be likely failure sometimes. It just seems that's been the history of why it's gone on for sixteen years. And yeah, they're three-year period, not, so maybe it works fine, you think it's done, but what's what's happened? It 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 happens again. So then you have the issue, you're in the opportunity, you're at the design stage, which is where we're at right now. Why would you design a a a project to put the living units fifteen feet away from the work? From where this is mostly happening? So that that is sort of what you're thinking. You know, it, that's why I I'm a little frustrated by saying it's their problem. I mean, you know this exists and it's not some third party, it's the property owners that are making these complaints. We find him credible. What you don't find credible is saying, oh, it's all better, I mean, maybe they are, maybe the last two years have been fine. But but that 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 it necessarily solves all the problems. It's it's sort of the, that that's the issue, I I think. That that because of all the things you mentioned, because of the, you know, they can put it down, but you have evaporation rate and hot weather, it's gonna. You know, you 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 have to do it more frequently and then you got a lot of mud, but uh who knows? So maybe there's a big wind and sometimes how do you control that? And when the people come inspect, it's not windy anymore. Or you got a new contractor, an employee who comes in and it's not familiar because he's the first time on the job, so they mess up once. Or sprinklers, they break. Um, so I mean, that that's the kind of thing that's just sort of reality. That you, so so when you, when you know that's gonna happen, and it may be infrequently. But it's still, it's happened consistently, let's design a thing so that we mitigate that and still get some affordable housing. That that was kind of the the effort for the and for for the concept plan, my understanding.
And and another thing, at what point, i- i- if we do deny this. At what point do you grind it back to a number of units in there? That the issues that have been brought up as as health and safety issues aren't a problem? How do we make that determination?
This is a concept plan, Bob. It's not an answer to all the. It it's it's how can we try to make it better? How can we try to work with the state statutes, with the developer, with all the issues that have been brought out? During the application process, we're not the developer, but we are trying to give some guidance and direction. Which is part of the statute itself. Like we have done in the past with other eight thirty G applications.
Just and just from a layman's perspective, Bob, in in the concept that staff was kind enough to put together. We have moved the buildings. Twice the distance from where they were originally, so they're thirty some feet now from the property line. And they're turned so that the, they're not facing the dust, they're facing each other, I believe is how it's. I think that we need to take that into consideration as we're discussing the issues here.
That that. That's what I'm looking at, Ken, i- is is how do we deny this and come up with a good concept plan? It's not going to look like, you know, we're we're just opposed to a big building.
And and I think, Chuck, I think you just mentioned it. I think one alternative we have is to approve based on the concept. Or a meeting of the minds between the applicant and the commission. Do I have that right or?
And going back to the thirty.
Right, yeah, when it is, are there conditions that can be imposed that would address the substantial public interest? And then you you could recommend a concept plan, adding a, I think I understood, you know, additional layer of buffering, right? And I think, uh. So so yeah, I mean, that that's a possibility.
How many units are in the concept plan?
Eighteen.
Oh, no, concept.
So the number of affordable units, instead of getting twelve from the forty-two units, you get six from this. So you you lose six affordable units. So is is that, you know, weighing that cost of the benefits of six affordable units weighed against the public health and safety issues? Is it worth it? You know, and that's, that's kind of what you're you're saying it is, if you go that way.
I'm just gonna question. Um, Penny Kessler. Um, let's say that we approve with a concept idea. I think we know that there have been developers. That we have approved with strong recommendations that have, once the approval has come through, they've been ignored. Which is frustrating, because that's not the point. Um. Is there any? Carrot stick, for lack of a better word, to make sure that the developer. Does work with us.
Wants approved?
Yep.
Well, they could take that approval to appeal.
Right, if if they don't like it, they can file it, so you have to approve. And it, you know, we were up to court with that, and if they don't appeal it and they approve it, then they have to build it. It's not like any enforcement action. You have to build it out in accordance with plans, and there's potential problems if you don't.
But this is a concept plan. So at the same time, I'm sorry to interrupt. It's a concept. It's not a build.
Right.
This is what we've come up with. Can you work with this? That's the question that seems like you want to ask.
Right, and then this is the other thing, before they, they don't have to take it a field, but under the statute, they they can apply for modification.
Correct.
Of their plan. They they can do that, and they may do that. They may take the concept plan, we can come back, and it's, and they have the right to do that.
Oh, no, yes, I'm sure.
Now for the sixty-four thousand dollar question, is a denial a winnable case?
Um, I I don't want to predict, given my record in the Porters Commission. With preemitorians and things, I I I don't. I I, you know, courts do, I I I can say in general, generality, that it's a difficult burden of proof, but you've got it interesting. I've never seen a record like this, so who knows?
Any other comments or questions?
No.
Anything else from staff?
Okay, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna draft a resolution, and it sounds like a conditional approval. Or 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 denial, or denial with suggestions, or or what do you think?
I would like to hear everybody.
Right, I'm.
I mean, just in general.
In general, um. I like what we did with the concept. Um, I don't know that it's actually the final resolution, but I think we need to recommend it to the developer. And go from there. I I am. Leading towards approval with conditions based on the concept developed by that. That's why I'm thinking how to be overruled, because everybody gets a vote. I don't know that a straight denial serves the purpose for the developer or for the commission or for the town of Bethel, for that matter, and the people who live here. Uh, and. I know this is hokey, but we've been elected by the people of the town of Bethel to do that. We can't do the best thing we can for the town for development purposes. Uh, my personal opinion is forty-two units sitting on that lot, and that condition is not the best thing for the people of Bethel or specifically the neighborhood. Um, so I'd like to see if we can't reach some compromise. Um, and I think the way to do it, and I defer to you, Chuck, on this, is to approve with the condition that they meet. Or come close to the concept plan we have.
I totally agree. The concept plan, I thought, I think is a very good one. And I would like them to look at it and hopefully seriously consider it, or come in with something a little bit close to it. Not many more, but less than the forty-two or the thirty.
I'm having trouble.
Go ahead.
Understanding, um.
I'm sorry.
With the, so you're looking at the concept plan as doing an approval, the two of you are looking at the concept plan as just doing it an approval for the concept plan?
I don't think we can do that.
What is that? And and but at the same time, are you basing that on? What in the record? Are you, you at our previous discussion, when we're dealing with the health and the traffic? Issues that you did trying to put this together, or?
To me, it's primarily the health.
And and I and I think the traffic as well.
Hey, Ken. If the concept plan has a hard number, which was proposed.
Right.
Um, that seems to me that it would mitigate a lot of the health issues.
I agree.
Um, the health issues from Laura's statement here are pretty strong.
Right.
But I would be okay. Eighteen, hard number, not a floating number.
Right.
A hard number.
I don't know if we can do that specific.
Well, the concept plan states eighteen.
Right.
Right, that's what it says.
I don't.
Because then, when we're eighteen, you can move that building.
Or buildings.
About well, two buildings, but you can move it further away from that back.
Correct.
And put the parking in behind, so the dust factor is much, much less. And and the parking would be, uh, trap would be much less too, with eighteen units.
I don't know if we can. Well, that's a point.
Well, I mean.
Could you, could you?
Well, parking.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think that that was my understanding is, I think the concept plan had one set of big trees, so I think.
Yes.
Should be double that or, I guess.
As well as fence, correct?
Yeah, as well as a fence and.
I don't like the tree concept. I like the abreviate and the hemlock concept, because when you have.
But you're getting in a, I I don't.
But I think a buffer is part of what you want to have.
And then, and you have that, we have that in our zoning regulations, when you're dealing with a residential use adjacent to an industrial use. So you're changing the use on this property.
Right.
Right.
So. In order to change that use, you're using the guidance of your own zoning regulations, which say a twenty-five foot buffer. Between the two zones.
Yeah, even though that would normally be on the industrial.
On the industrial zone, but we're trying to, again, the regulations are thrown out the window. They're used as guidance at this point, if we're dealing with a stack.
Yeah, and I was thinking that's double, at least, that's.
At least not.
Sounds only bringing up those two concepts, because dust wise, that mitigates tremendous amount of dust.
The height of the building also mitigates.
Exactly, exactly.
Going to two stories versus three stories.
Do you mean because three stories, because dust floats? Is that what you're?
Dust floats.
Correct.
Good if I've seen it.
Right, okay.
I was on thirty-sixth Sunny Hill Road today, and it floats. Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, we approved a concept plan. We we approved the. Idea of affordable housing in there. And a concept plan with eighteen units.
Right.
Is that considered an approval of eighteen units, or we have to go through this some more?
The the conditions of approval would probably require a formal site plan, so there would be more process. Uh, that's because it is only. But that would be one.
We'd have to agree to to drop this down from forty-two units to eighteen.
Right, you you could just comply with the conditions, show the a a more detailed site plan like this. Um, and then, you know, you wouldn't appeal, and but it would be involve a a further.
Does that take his right to appeal away?
Yeah, or he could, he could appeal. The developer would have it sound like this, and I, you know.
How would he appeal? He would appeal just as a denial?
He, you can appeal conditional approvals as well. You can appeal a denial or approval of divisions.
We did that, uh, we did that, uh, during, um, in the wetlands, did it. We did a, in a conditional approval years ago.
What's our confidence that this individual is willing to play ball? Have you guys had conversations? I'm sure you have, but it, do we feel like? I I just worry, I mean, listen, I've got eight thirty G PTSD at this point. I mean, I feel like. We do everything we can to try to make it work, and then they come around and punch us right in the face anyway. So it's like. It's like, what, we're trying to do the right thing, making suggestions, and they're like, yeah, that's a good suggestion. I'm gonna build forty units anyway, screw you. Um, so what's our confidence level that we've got somebody that is willing to work with us?
I I say, when when you talk about confidence level, I don't look at it in terms of confidence level. I look at what we have accomplished over the past ten years in dealing with affordable housing and dealing with property owners. When you look at what we've accomplished versus what was initially presented. I mean, for the most part, in my opinion, we've turned motel eights. Um, that have been proposed into something that's more compatible and architectural pleasing in the neighborhoods. And we're appealing to the tenants that are living in those units.
Um, Chuck Anders, I I would say I have no idea what they'll do. I think it's, I'm gonna say, just so like a coach. Is you only control what you have. You have an application before you, you have a statute, you apply those criteria, and then you you do your best, and it's their call.
Yes.
All right.
I'm right.
So. General consensus on how to move forward.
Sure, what, i- if we have some questions, we can have alternative versions too, and and, you know, give you multiple.
It's, it's, listen, I appreciate the work that went into it. I I I don't know, I, uh, to my own fault, missed a lot of meetings, because I travel a lot, but I. Man, I still have the sting of that. That statute's a piece of crap, like, I mean, we all know it, and it work from people above our pay grade. But it like, I I just worry about building affordable housing in a location that's. That we're talking about the health concerns of, and I know we're gonna mitigate some of that, but like, they still exist. So like, are are we, are we building the right affordable housing? Like, that's the thing, and and it's not us. It's the developer, and and as Chuck said, it's all them and them and all nine, that's fine, but. I, that comes back in the back of my head, so it's just my my opinion, but you know, I think I appreciate the work that went into the concept plan. I think it looks good. I think limiting to the degree we can, the number of units makes a huge difference, obviously, like, that's, that's massive. And and that's how I think a lot of people think about affordable housing developments is, like, a a small, nice. Like, neighborhood-like, like, I always look at, uh, what's the one on Nashville, or the start of Nashville, where they created their own little pocket of, like, a little mini street, right? I that was like, to me, that's like, been the best development that I've seen in years.
Was one of our shining stars, Rich.
A hundred percent. I agree, and we were all part of that, and that's awesome. You know what I mean? So I, that's my gold standard. I I I realize it can't be everywhere, but I, that's how I'm thinking about this. Like, I I I I still am, and maybe it's, I don't know, my own thing, but. I am still hesitant to to bend and break at the behest of eight thirty G applications, because they.
Okay.
Sometimes they're sneaky. That's all.
So so what you're saying, Rich, is you you would like to see us come up with a denial. I mean, and there's nothing wrong with asking for that at all.
No, I'm, I, I, that if if we can, if we can cut the units down from forty-two to eighteen, like, that's a victory.
No.
Right, because that, right, like, Chuck, you you've said it a couple of times now, like, it would be hard to swallow to say you can't do anything with your property, even though it's zoned for it. Right? Or something to that effect. I'm not putting words in your mouth, but if that's the general consensus. Then I think conceptually, that plan makes sense. I I still feel that there's risk associated with it from a health perspective, um, because I don't know enough, I don't know if. I'm not a health inspector, but that sounds like the most compelling evidence I've ever heard. Like, I mean, we've, listen, we've worked at a lot of these things, and we've tried. Like, we're, we're grasping at straws to find stuff. This is like, somebody actually said, yeah, that might be a problem. So I think we just have to take that into consideration when we talk, when we talk to the applicant. And when we, you know, we share the concept plan to say, like, listen, like, here's the testimony, and I know we'll do this, um, just to get their gut reaction to it, right?
Yeah.
We can argue denial and suggest the concept plan.
Yeah, and I have to also.
I'll be, I'll be outrun, I'm sure.
We can do alternatives.
We'll do alternatives, yeah.
And what, well, the most important thing we have to think of here is, I mean. Is that we're working for the people of this town, as we said initially. And we're all working for the neighborhood and for the people who are gonna be living here together. Because this is gonna be a neighborhood, and that that's where people come to live. And I I've seen, not not just, um, Nashville, but I've seen Sandy Lane, and a lot of things have been done. By people working together. And I, and so if if they deny me that we work together better. That'll work.
If I could just throw in one. I, I'm sorry. As it. As the application exists right now. I. I think eight thirty G is, that's up. I think eight thirty G is, sends a powerful message that we have people in this town. Who can't afford rent. We have, we have people that want to live in this town. Who would be contributing, members of this town who simply can't afford it. Eight thirty G does not mean that we're building. You know, we're we're not building the projects, you know, we're not, we're not doing like, ooh, kind of thing. No, this is for people who can't afford because prices are expensive. I think eight thirty G is valuable, and I think we work with it really well here. That said, I cannot, I can't support. Um. This project, even with the eight thirty J, based on the safe and healthy issues. Safety and health issues, it's been a long day. Um, so that's. You know, if we want, if we would have put something. Time, which was, here is a denial, but we're doing this. Bring something back to us. I I don't, my sense is that's not going to go anywhere. But I I can't, I can't do this, not with, not with what we've heard from the community, not with what we hear from DEP. And our health people and the traffic people. I I think it's, the the, um, application as it exists now is way too problematic.
Thank you. But well, eight thirty G and TOD have something in common, and that is, we we know. Affordable housing could need it.
Yes, absolutely.
And so I think, I think that's very important. Okay, and and the process as well.
Right.
Okay.
I'm done.
Okay. Okay, great. I mean, we have some direction.
Yes.
You can put that way, Rod.
Yes.
I'm probably my brains are, I'm sorry. I can smell it, something.
All right, so we work, um, together on this. Um, if you have any questions or. Um, anything that you need help with, please feel free to call Chuck, Attorney Andrews, or myself, and, um, we will have.
Well, I draft a resolution for your next meeting. I think there's a deadline. It's thirty-five days from when what was decided.
Correct.
So that's when it down, that's that's our deadline at the same.
And issue next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Charlie.
Under your agenda, new business. Jim, the divisions for two lots, forty-five people, I have an extension.
I'm gonna, well, Grandma, I'm doing this, um. Uh, that is a subdivision. I will say it's a very simple, uncomplicated subdivision. It does not require a public hearing.
Oh.
So it is presently under review by our engineering department. So it is presently under review by our engineering department. And as soon as that review is um completed, they'll come and present before the commission. That public hearing is not required.
All right, Beth, you have any additional staff report information?
Uh yes, I do, I'm very late yesterday afternoon. Um for scheduling purposes, I do have one item that I'd like you to add to the agenda, and that is ten. Sunset Hill Road.
Oh.
You don't mind?
Mm-hmm.
Um it is a very unusual request, uh it's a single. Um the property owner dwelling unit. With a horse farm, she wants to put a barn, barn on the corner of her property. Um it would be located in the front of the house. It is um. I had to get a variance from side yard setback because it's a quarter lot, she's been working for the last six months with other land use commissions. To get what she needs.
Which end of Sunset Hill is that?
It's it's up by a paddy sleigh.
Okay.
Okay, it's at the corner there. Um she has submitted all her drawings and things of that nature, her name is Kareen Roche. Okay, beautiful barn, so on and so forth, there is a requirement of a public hearing. So really, what I would like to do is schedule a public hearing if we could for June thirteenth. Make it first up on the agenda. Again, this will be, I think, the third public, second public hearing, I'll be through with the applicant, um property owners Jason to there and everything are all. Pretty well adverse into the application, there was no um issues with the zoning board's appeal.
Procedure.
This will be up on the I drive for the next meeting.
Procedure question.
Yeah, this is.
Motion, motion, motion added.
This is, this is, this is for eleven Sunset Hill Road, not ten Sunset Hill Road.
It says ten, okay? Eleven Sunset.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to uh. Schedule a public hearing for June thirteenth for Roche, is that the name? Roche for eleven Sunset Hill. And to send it out to the various.
You're adding it.
Oh, I'm sorry, add it to the agenda.
Hey, just to show him.
Yeah.
Got it, go ahead, guys.
Well, surely I. Against Stephen's eye. So moved.
I do have one other item to.
Do we need a second motion now to schedule the public? And you are.
Yes, okay, I'd like to add, um I had Roche, eleven Sunset Hill. For a public hearing date on June thirteenth, and to send it out to all the various departments necessary.
Any seconded? Then Stephen's eye, well, Shannon's eye. Rich, Bob?
Bob, I'm good.
Okay, yeah, so moved.
David, could you go into the Google Drive and pull up Edison Kitchen, please?
I'm on it.
Edison Kitchen would like to, while he's pulling up the map to show you. Um Edison Kitchen is in the old opera house, what they would like to do is set up a per- permanent lease agreement with the town of Ethel. In order to do outdoor dining. And in order to do that, they have to go to the Board of Selectmen, you'll see our light poles are here going around the corner. This is the area that they're already using.
They're using it.
They're already using it now.
In front or on the side next to?
No, it's on the front.
That's in front.
This is on the side facing Greenwood Avenue, Mr. Chairman.
Where the cluck, where the cluck is.
We got it.
Are we requiring them to do that? Because I I thought we, a couple of months ago, we kind of said.
We are, what we're doing is by. Okay, what we are doing is bypassing some of the uh procedural requirements of the Board of Selectmen, and one of them be. Eight dash twenty-four, so we've already helped, we've already helped the applicant put together the legal description of the easement. We had our town engineer work with putting the design engineering together for the Board of Selectmen. What I'm looking for is for the commission to agree to um this easement and let the Board of Selectmen deal with the aspects of. The costs associated with it, is there gonna be a rental fee, things of that nature, a lease fee. They'll deal with that, all I'm looking for is for the commission to agree that this is a good concept, go forward with.
It's great, I gotta recuse myself because I do their flowers and their social media.
Well, they need to be watered.
Listen, Beth, it's a lot of work, we do seasonal, I did all the Christmas stuff, it was very beautiful.
You did a good job. It looked fair, it looked lovely, you know that, Red.
I listen, I take care of that property.
I know, you do very good job.
This is just for the concept.
No, all good.
No, this is the lease agreement.
So do you need, do you need a motion to approve or?
Motion to approve the lease, the proposed easement area of nine hundred ninety square feet. For Edison Kitchen to continue with their outdoor dining.
I make a motion, we approve the lease area. Um of nine hundred ninety square feet that butts up against Greenwood Avenue. What else do we need?
The lease area showed and showed on the proposed drawing of nine hundred ninety square feet.
Okay.
For an easement.
Second.
And I'll put that together in a memo and I'll send it to the Board of Selectmen. With the information.
Kenny Grant eye.
And Stephen's eye.
Benny, I'm nice.
Look at that eye.
Rob. And Rich is recusing himself.
Rich is recused.
All right, so moved.
Look at those Roberts rules.
And that's all I have here this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Beth, I have a question. You'll be, the old DNS Auto site where they put up the fence.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
What's the purpose for that?
To keep people from going in there and leaving um. Uh dog feces.
Where's that?
Bitch, signs, things of that nature.
Where?
Got a corner from uh Sidco.
I have not spoken to them, there isn't anything.
Oh, where they put the stockade fencing up.
Yeah.
This is.
Hey, you know what, it looks reason, it looks better.
So we, we can't add, we can't add our signs anymore.
Anyway, let's keep moving.
Anything, any comments from the public? Miss Saint Germain.
Allison Saint Germain, fourteen Elgin Ave, I do have a question about procedure, especially when you do have big discussions and votes like tonight and. I know that um obviously with um professional jobs and people coming and going. And if a a commission member may be not there and you have alternates who might be here or might not be. What's the procedure of which alternate would you seat, right? Is it the person that's sitting there first, is it alphabetical order? Is it seniority, is it party affiliation, and you don't have to answer that right now, but especially when there are. Proposals in front of the commission that have a lot of information and like a couple of commission members have said. They've caught up on videos or recordings, which sometimes it's hard to sit back and watch that through. But many of you have been here through so many different, long, long meetings with lots of information and others had it. And so if a big um decision comes up and there's an open seat and an alternate is going to fit in. How do you determine that? If that's something that I can call and talk to staff about or um chair later. But that's just a concern from the public, because sometimes if a big decision comes up and there's a person who wasn't there or a person who was there. It's like roll the dice, what the decision could be, so just a a observation from someone who's come to a lot of your meetings.
Thank you.
I'll explain this to Allison. They did have this, you weren't at the beginning of the last meeting, they talked about that.
Right, yes.
That's the last meeting.
Yeah, cool.
We discussed it.
Okay.
Any other comments from the public? Commissions, making motion to close. All in favor? All in favor?
Good night, Rich.